Good evening. I'd like to call the San Bruno City Council meeting to order for its meeting on October 13th. I apologize for the tight quarters, but unfortunately, the weather left us no choice. We have a darkened senior center, so we're here at City Hall this evening. I'd like to begin by calling role, please.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Here.
Councilmember Medina.
Here.
Councilmember Ibera.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Here.
Mayor Pranzella.
Here. And if you'd join me in the pledge of allegiance, please. The flag is behind the screen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a few announcements this evening. The first is the city's annual Arbor Day tree planting will be held this Saturday, October 17th, at City Park. There's more details on the city website. B, the Project Pride Committee announces the annual Halloween parade will be held Friday, October 30th, at the Shops at Tamforan, beginning at 3:30. And the third item is the 13th Annual Coats for Kids Program. It's collecting clean, gently-used coats for distribution at the Volunteer Fireman's Hall, 618 Seminole Avenue, on Thursday, November 19th, from 4:00 to 7:00. And again, there's more information on the city website. This evening, we have an annual event that's always wonderful to see take place. It's the Annual Beautification Task Force 2009 13th Annual San Bruno Beautification Awards. At this point, I'll turn it over to the committee chairman, Irene O'Connell.
Thank you very much, and I'm going to go to the podium. Good evening, everyone, and I do want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. The rain has stopped a little bit, but it still takes some effort to come out when the weather's like this. Before I start with the presentations themselves, I'd like to introduce the Beautification Task Force members that are here tonight. They help the city with all the work that they do with the Beautification Task Force. We're the people who organize and operate Operation Clean Sweep. We do the beautification awards. We do a thing called City Lights, where we take out for holiday lights. We take pictures of all the holiday lights and put them on for a presentation and all sorts of other things like that. So, on my left here is Sally Calvert. This is Tammy Del Benny, Sandy Headley, Carolyn Livinggood, Melanie Tobin's there. And they've come out tonight to help us celebrate all the efforts that you've put into your property. So, I'd like to give them a hand. They work very hard all year. What we -- some people have asked me how this happens. We send out information. There's information on our city website. We send out notices to people that were having the beautification awards, and people send in their nominations. So, you may have been nominated by your neighbor, a friend, a beautification awards member, a beautification task force member, anybody who's seen your property and thought it was worth mentioning and worth getting an award for. So, today, we've had over 25 nominees for the different categories that we have. And what we're going to start with is the single-family residence. And this is it. The next slide kind of defines what we do. It's one that has curb appeal, that adds to the physical appearance and well-being of the neighborhood. And we're going to run through the first 15 or so properties. These were properties that were nominated. Unfortunately, they did not receive awards, but we'd like to make sure that they're acknowledged for the fact that somebody thought well enough of them to nominate them. So, this is 3271 Jeffrey Drive. 3260 Longview Drive. 1900 Spyglass Drive. 2791 Crestmore Drive. 2275 Crestmore Drive. 131 Portello Way. 145 De Soto Way. 561 Hazel. 1504 Park. 4117 Cypress. 468 Elm. 711 Elm. 568 Cherry. These are all honorable mentions. We keep these in here to let people know what your competition was and to encourage all the people that did nominate these addresses and these residents to continue working on theirs. So, we'd like to explain that the next person we're going to talk about is the third-place winner. They'll receive a nice little rose. A certificate that says thank you for what you've done, and a nice little check that we hope you go spend in San Bruno for something that gives you a lot of pleasure. So, the person -- the resident that received the third place for a single-family resident is 2585 Lexington Way. So, I know those people are here. The second-place winner is 3350 Longview Drive. I know those people are here. And the first-place winner in this category is 3951 Colby Way. She told me before the meeting started that she was surprised to even receive the letter because her garden wasn't finished, as when we took these pictures. So, we're looking forward to seeing it the rest of the time. So, congratulations. I forgot to mention, you get one more extra-special thing that you get to put in your front yard. We hope you keep it there for a long time. It's made to last. And these plaques are donated by the Prudential California Realty, whose our mayor is president. It's still very nice of him to donate just, so we hope you put that in the front. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. The next category is zero-scaping, and as you can see, it's for low-water use and drought-resistant landscaping. We have three honorable mentions. The first one is 101 Goodwin Drive. The second is 1920 Spyglass Way. The third is 2533 Whitman Way. And third place in this category is 3920 Colby Way. So, I know those people are here as well, I believe. No? Oh. Well, next one. The next -- the next address in that category is 140 Shell Drive. We were fortunate enough to have a before -- can you do one more? A before picture, and then you can see the after picture, where the landscape is considerably changed and altered to do zero-scaping. So, would you come up? Living the thing, absolutely.
I just want to mention that I do believe in doing what I tell other people to do, and that's to fix up your place. I want to point out, I live up in Pacific Heights by Skyline. It usually takes a heavy beating of criticism about its weather, but between Skyline shining and my house, I'm trying to make it shine too. Thank you.
And first place in this category is 546 Hawthorne Avenue. I'm hoping these people are here. No? I know, unfortunate. That's okay. The next category we have is improved property. And this is property that has gone through substantial improvements in the last year. Oops. For the -- two "the's" in the front. So, we have two honorable mentions. We have 106 Anza Way. Oops. Did we go past Anza? And the next one is 850 Keynes Avenue. Did I -- did I -- I'm -- did I get them backwards? Oh, well. The important ones are the next ones. Third place, we have 855 Genovin Avenue. I think it was second. We didn't have a before picture of this, but I -- if you remember it, it's right on Genovin Avenue, you come up and down. And before all this work was done to the property, there was nothing in front except some lawn, and kind of shabby lawn at that, and you've done all this work, and we really, really appreciate it. So, thank you.
I saw you out there. And you watched her. It's a community thing. And also, as you go -- do you have your lights on?
Yes, I do have my lights on.
If you go up Genovin, she has her Halloween lights on. It looks fabulous, so thank you very much. Our second-place winner in this category is 3210 Jeffrey Drive. And are those people here? Yay! Come on up!
And these are -- you can see the before and after pictures. You worked very, very hard. We really appreciate all that you've done, and we hope you continue to keep your property as lovely as you have been.
Thank you.
Would you like to say?
Sure. I was just telling a neighbor that when we first bought the house, I was so embarrassed by the way it looked on the outside. This is when we first got the house, that I wouldn't even tell my parents where we lived. So, we worked on it for a long, long time, and I wish my husband was here to help us accept this award. But I'll accept them, both of us. Thank you.
We could take them out to Devon.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and our first-place winner in this category is 2271 Rosewood. And are those people here? Oh, and there you are. Congratulations. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you so much for this award. My wife and I have lived in this humble little town for about 10 years now, and finally got around to doing this project. We started about 10 years ago designing it. Finally got around to actually doing it. But we like this -- hope this is an example for all the other people in San Bruno, that, you know, with good design and careful planning, that you don't have to necessarily spend a fortune to remodel your home, and this is what you can do. So, thank you for the award.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for coming. We have one more award, and I'm extremely happy to say that the president of Skyline College is here, along with some other people, to accept this award. The group project is a beautification project that was for and completed by a group of people and our organization. And the next couple of pictures, you can see, this is the Skyline mural that was completed, and the next picture shows a close-up. You can see the vibrant colors and the different sections of that. And I'm not going to explain what it is. I'm hoping that Ms. Moreau comes up and explains it. And if you'd like your team to come up, I'd -- we'd really love it.
Let me tell you a little bit briefly about this project. First of all, we owe thanks to the community members who contribute to the Skyline President's Innovation Fund, because this was an innovation-funded project. The mural represents textual samples from around the world, from many parts of the world that are represented by our student population. The work was built and painted by members of our art student group and led by our coordinator of the gallery, Paul Brydenbaugh. He wasn't able to be here tonight because he's teaching, but I'm so glad to have some of our students with us, as well as Sandy Erber, our Director of Marketing Development, PR. We're very, very pleased to receive this award. We're excited about the mural, and thanks so much for the recognition for it. Appreciate it very much.
We'd like to present this to you.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Again, thank you for doing so much for the community.
And we're excited to see what you guys come up with next.
Could you say your names?
Francis Nguyen, Sharon Zing.
Would you like to add anything?
I think what we wanted to do was, um...
That the students ranged from ages in the teens through...
Don't point at me. And the oldest one here tonight, I'm very glad.
She's not the oldest, but in our range and across, you know, across the diversity group. And while we did the mural, what we thought was just something for our class to do a project, ended up being such a community piece. Everyone who walked by had something positive to say or picked up a brush, just for even a moment. And just having that moment of one little piece or one little color on there, just -- it changed the whole project from a class thing to a whole community college. And it's just grown in spirit, and I can't wait for it to continue growing. You haven't seen this anyway?
No, we said it all.
Well, this just about concludes our presentation. I would like to thank Vicki Heshay and Carol Bonner, who are city clerk and assistant city clerk. They do all the grunt work. They put the cookies out and make the coffee and do the plaques and make sure we sign everything and get everything together. So, I'd like to give them a round of applause as well. So, thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay for the city council meeting, but if you prefer not, there's still cookies and coffee outside, and you can enjoy your neighbors and chat about landscaping. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you. On behalf of the entire city council, congratulations to all of the winners and to all of those who worked on your house. It's a great improvement always to the community, and we really appreciate it. Congratulations. Well, you're welcome to stay. We won't keep you too long, but if you'd like, as Irene said, there is coffee and cookies in the lobby as well.
Through the chair, Mr. Mayor. On behalf of her colleagues, I'd just like to congratulate again. 13 years to councilmember Irene O'Connell. It was a dream at one point, and now it's grown into be a, you know, a legacy, a very good city tradition, and we're proud to see it and very proud that you brought it forward. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. This time, we have a presentation from Dr. Scott Lawrence, who's the superintendent of the San Mateo Union High School District. Dr. Lawrence, welcome to San Bruno.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name's Scott Lawrence, and I'm happily the new superintendent for the San Mateo Union High School District. And one of the things that I've been trying to do is to go out and meet as many people as I possibly can and introduce myself, to say thank you to the city manager and the Department of Recreation and your police chief for all the help that we've received over the course of the last few weeks. When the Skyline incident happened, I got a phone call from the police chief really quickly. It was right after what had happened at Hillsdale. I had the opportunity to go out to lunch and learn about the city, and I appreciate that outreach that I received from the staff. I wanted to talk just a little bit about what we're doing and our goals, and I happen to have a -- one of my board members actually is here tonight, Mr. Dave Pine. We are committed to opening up our communications with the cities and within the school district, and so we've created a liaison position, both from myself with the city managers and at the elected official level with Mr. Pine. And he's going to be the representative both at Cappuccino and with you in case there's something that you think that you would need to speak to one of our board members about. He's going to be the person that's assigned to this city. We are in doing some really wonderful things. If you look at some of the schools in our district, you're going to see that we're in a massive building program, and over the course of the next three years, we're going to be spending about $300 million on our various facilities. And specifically, CAP, you're going to see some major construction with the theater and new classroom buildings going up. And so, there's going to be, what we call them, you know, some world-class facilities for some world-class kids, and that's our goal. We're also going to be spending quite a bit of time talking about 21st-century skills. I don't know about you, I drive a hybrid. And when I was growing up, I could open up the, you know, the hood of my car, and I could see an engine and where the spark plugs were, and I could change the oil. Now, I open it up, there's this big block of metal with some computer plugs in it. So, our 21st-century skills are different than the skills when I was in high school and I was growing up, and it's important for our students to know what that is, even if they're not planning on going to college. There's a level that we're responsible for training the students so that they can be successful. It's going to be a big emphasis for us over the course of the next few years. Also, we're going to try, like crazy, like I said, to communicate with everyone in our community. It's a large district, and so we're going to step out and try to really engage our various different communities to make sure that we're listening, paying attention, because, you know, we have the students in common. And that's something that we really appreciate, and we know that we need to get your input on where we need to go over the course of the next few years. So, hopefully, I will see you around at a number of events over the course of the next few years. And again, thank you very much for your warm welcome. And if you have any questions, I can answer them, but if not, I just want to say thank you.
Any questions at this time from council? Now, we certainly appreciate you coming here and meeting us personally. Dave, we appreciate you being the liaison with the city. We think it's a great new program, and we have so many things that we share in common. I think it'll prove beneficial to both the district and the city. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for coming out this evening. Irene?
I just want to say welcome as well, and I've had three children at CAP. One's still there, so I'm very interested in what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Item five, review of the agenda. I have no changes on there, and hearing none from council. We'll move to approval of minutes. The regular city council meeting of September 8th, 2009, they'll stand approved as submitted unless there's any changes or corrections. Hearing none, the minutes will stand approved. Consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented. Earlier council action may be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion unless requested by councilmember, citizen, or staff. Is there anything to be pulled? Not, is there a move to approve? Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item eight, public hearings. Notices have been published, posted in mail. Waive reading and adopt ordinance establishing temporary moratorium on the establishment and operation of medical marijuana collectives. City attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue before the city council this evening is whether to adopt a moratorium. And a moratorium is a temporary ban on a particular use, and in this case, on medical marijuana collectives. First, I'd like to provide you and the public with a little bit of the legal framework for the issue that is before you tonight. In 1996, the state of California, through a voter initiative, adopted the Compassionate Use Act, which allowed the cultivation, possession, and distribution of marijuana for use by persons who are seriously ill and in connection with a primary caregiver. In 2003, that statute was further amended by the Medical Marijuana Program, which created a voluntary program for issuance of identification cards to qualified patients and their primary givers in order to effectuate the purposes of the 1996 Act. Together, these two statutes allow and authorize qualified patients and their caregivers to pool their resources to meet the collective needs of the group. So, we refer to these as collectives. It also, through case law, creates a limited defense under state law to the possession, use, or distribution of marijuana that is for qualified patients and qualified caregivers. Now, there's some things that the law did not do, which people seem to be confused about. One of the things is that it did not allow for dispensaries, that is, the retail -- a retail use, the sale of marijuana. It did not allow for that. And the second thing it didn't do was, it didn't do, of course, it didn't do away with federal law. And the use, possession, cultivation, distribution of marijuana under federal law continues to be illegal. Most -- so, given this somewhat confusing framework that we find ourselves in, San Bruno, like a lot of other cities, has recently received inquiries by interested persons who want to establish a medical marijuana collective. Now, it's not specifically allowed in our zoning code, but it's not specifically disallowed either. Now, that's not completely unusual, and a number of cities, as we sort of look across the state of California to see how they responded to that, there seem to be three different approaches that cities have used in addressing this issue. And they are allowing but regulating medical marijuana, banning marijuana, or enacting a temporary ban while the matter is further studied. In fact, there are at least 30 cities, to the first, allowing but regulating, that have followed that particular approach, including some of our neighbors. You may have seen in the paper, it was an attachment tonight, that South San Francisco recently approved a medical marijuana collective. The San Mateo City also allows and regulates them, and the county of San Mateo also allows but regulates medical marijuana collectives. And usually, the regulation takes two forms. One is a limited -- an approach by which the collectives are limited by zoning, through regulation of zoning, where can they exist? And the second is requiring particular security precautions, along with other regulations, like obtaining a business license from the city. The second approach, banning, has been adopted by, I think, almost 100 cities in California. The issue there is whether is that really an option that is available to the city council, and that is a legal issue that is being addressed in the courts. The city of Anaheim had adopted a ban, and that was challenged in the courts. Right now, we're waiting a decision from the appellate court there. But my take on that is, however that goes, that's probably going to get appealed to the California Supreme Court. So, that issue is not yet clear to consider as an option, that is, whether it's a legally viable approach. The third approach is a temporary ban, and about 50 cities have adopted temporary bans. Most recently, the city of Claremont was met with a legal challenge on their temporary ban, and they ended up prevailing on that. The city had denied an applicant a business license because they were not -- collectives were not specifically allowed in their city, sort of like ours. The city then enacted a moratorium. In the meantime, the operator went ahead and set up business, and the city decided to pursue an injunction to try and close down that business. And at the appellate level, the city won. The court found that the state laws that had been enacted did not preempt the state's authority on this particular issue. So, that is the approach that we're looking at for San Bruno and the issue that is before you this evening. The benefit to the city on enacting a moratorium would be these things. It would allow the staff to have the opportunity to study the impacts of collectives that, particularly that we see in our neighboring jurisdictions. I know that the police chiefs and Chief Telford could speak to this, have done a -- have studied a great deal about what the impacts have been in various cities. But it would be very helpful for us to know what are the impacts on our neighboring jurisdictions. How has it worked out for those cities? Another thing is that the city is just commencing its zoning code update, and so that's a -- would be a very good opportunity to look at those uses and make some sort of recommendation about whether marijuana collectives would be compatible or not compatible with different zoning districts. And the third reason is that the legal framework is unclear at this point. It would allow the staff an opportunity to see whether a ban is an option or whether it's really not an option that the city council can consider. If the city council were -- if you desired to go forward with the moratorium this evening, the way it works is this. It would require a forfeit vote of the city council. The moratorium initially only lasts for 45 days by state law. The city council could then consider whether it wished to extend that moratorium, and it could do so, again, by forfeit vote, for one time, for 22 months and 15 days. for one time, for 22 months and 15 days. Now, don't ask me where these funny numbers come from. I'm not sure why it's not 24 months or some other amount of time. But it's 22 months and 15 days. But in order to do that, 10 days before the expiration of the moratorium, if you enacted it this evening, staff would need to provide to you, and the city council would need to adopt, a study that describes the steps that staff has taken and the city has taken in order to commence study of this issue. With that, I'd like to see if the city council has any questions for me.
Any questions, the city attorney? Irene?
I have one. Does a person who wishes to use a collective have to reside in the city that it is, that the collective is at?
Not necessarily.
Okay, so if, if South City goes ahead with theirs, I know San Mateo has theirs, somebody in San Bruno could go to either of those cities and use, use the service?
If they were a qualified patient and a member of that collective.
Okay, thank you.
Chief Chair?
What's the criteria of what will be studied by the chief? In other words, what, what's he looking for?
Well, I think that the main issues are to see, how is this working in the other cities? Are the security precautions that they've taken adequate? Are there impacts to neighborhoods that are not adequately understood right now? What is the crime rate? Is it increased? Is there any effect on neighboring businesses? Issues like that.
Do the chair. And are there also limitations that can be placed upon them about the number, about where they're located, towards schools or other type of particular facilities that we're concerned about?
Yes, there is an opportunity to consider how close or proximate they could be to schools, to certain public facilities. And certainly, you can look at it from a zoning perspective also. Perhaps, some cities have taken the approach that they want to limit them to commercial or industrial areas.
Can you put a, also a limitation on how many?
That is something I would have to research further. I don't know if you could do that or not. But I will find that out and get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ibarra?
Just a comment. I did speak with someone in South San Francisco. And it's been, I believe, a couple of years that they've been dealing with this. And the public spoke out. And it specifically did not want encroachment into residential areas. Fortunately, South San Francisco has a large industrial area. So I believe that's where they're, they're allowing it, or considered to allow it. So it's, I would, I would be very interested to see what other cities that are more similar to our setup, where there is mostly residential and not a lot of industrial, commercial. How they've, how they've dealt with it.
As part of the study, in 45 days, are you going to bring the council back alternatives that in the event they didn't extend the moratorium, if they, in fact, passed one this evening? Of things to look at, you know, recommendations as to what, if it's going to be allowed, location, zoning, proximity to schools, those types of things are going to be studied as well? I mean, I'd hate to see the, a recommendation come forward to extend the moratorium and then have it fail because you don't have a four-fifths vote and no place for the council to go with implementing ordinance.
So are you suggesting then that we should bring forth both? Both a potential ordinance?
Yeah, I mean, and you could come back and say that, you know, you don't find a need for a continuing moratorium, but here is an ordinance, and here's the restrictions that should be placed and whatnot. Or you might say that you find a need for a continuing moratorium and not four-fifths of the council agrees with you. Then you're not going to have a moratorium. And, but we certainly should have then some implementing guidelines and an ordinance on how staff's going to then work with the then permitted use.
Absolutely, we could do that.
Any other questions from council? This is a public hearing. Is there any member of the public wanting to address the city council? I just need you to state your name and street name for the record.
My name is Richard Silva. I have a little bit of information here for you. I was fortunate enough to attend the meeting in South City. And I believe there are a lot of holes in the inventory, which I have here for you. I don't think it was as detailed as it should have been. So I have that there for you. As far as the security goes, I left that open-ended. I believe that in South City, the security that they implemented is kind of like, would be like you'd see in a federal building, not in a health clinic. So I just wanted to comment and mention that. I have no problem working with the chief of police or whoever has input on the security. And I also have been doing research on robberies, things like that. So, you know, I'm open to answer any questions you have. Also, I'm also interested and open in anywhere in San Bruno. So any type of zoning that you have, you know, I'd like to be first in line to occupy that. And I've been in this business by choice. I don't have to do this. I manage restaurants for a living. This opportunity came to me in the last six months or so. And so we're just trying to pursue it and see where it goes from here.
Through the chair. Do you currently operate the facility?
I am a caregiver. I'm a primary caregiver.
Okay.
That was it, I just wanted to know what capacity you're addressing this.
Yeah, I'm a primary caregiver.
Okay.
Any other questions, council?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council? Okay, it is a public hearing, so if the council closes the public hearing, you will be precluded from speaking on this item. So I'll ask one more time, anyone wanting to address the council? Not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Council discussion or action?
Through the chair, if there's no discussion, I'll make a motion to waive the reading.
Second.
Motion and a second to waive the reading. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair, I'd like to adopt the ordinance establishing a temporary moratorium.
The city clerk has asked me to do her function, so I'll try to stumble through this.
All you have to do is say, roll call.
Roll call, please. And qualities, okay. Councilmember Ibarra?
Aye.
Councilmember Medina?
Aye.
Councilmember, Vice Mayor Wayne?
Aye.
And Councilmember O'Connell?
Aye.
Mayor Frantella?
Aye, thank you. So there, there has been a 45-day moratorium imposed. So this issue will be coming back to the city council at the second, it has to come back to the city council prior to the expiration, is that correct? So it'll be coming back to the city council at the November 24th council meeting. Okay, 45 days puts it at the 27th. So it'll be back at the 24th.
I think, I think we actually should bring it back in the one before so that we have, the report has to be issued 10 days before the expiration. And I think that's going to mean the first meeting in November.
Okay, so it'll be at the November 10th meeting. Just for those people that are here that are interested, okay, rather than the 24th. So it'll be November 10th. It'll be coming back to the city council.
Oh.
Thank you. Item nine, public comments for items not on agenda. Is anyone wishing to address the city council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item, oh, okay. We'll move on to item 10, receive quarterly. That's all right.
Yeah, I wanted to bring up the subject. I called our mayor recently about signs that have been posted in the city. Now, last weekend, they seemed to be cleared out for 255 Petrero Street in San Francisco. However, for years, I've been asking why we can't do away with some of these signs, like Milbury has with getting rid of garage sale signs, et cetera. Usually, they're left up. No one bothers to take them down. They're not the only ones, the garage sale, but they litter our town. When the rains come like this, they're left there to shred and create ugliness in our community. And I'm asking again tonight, why we haven't done anything about this? Or have we done something, and I'm unaware of it, because these signs are up? So either somebody's doing something illegal or whatever.
Well, we, we have done something. And those, the particular signs that you're speaking about are also in Milbury, in South San Francisco, in Daly City. They must come out after dark on Friday night and put them down and take them down on Sunday. They have been issued administrative citations. And I guess now that we've hit their pocketbook deep enough that they weren't here this weekend. So hopefully, that has taken care of the issue. But we're on them. And if need be, we'll, they'll be paid a personal visit by the police department.
Yeah, they're a bed-in bedding company. I did some research on them, and I found a man that's sort of behind it. He's not at that address, he's at another address. But what bothers me is that's only one sign that's in our town.
Well, it's probably not the last one. And there'll be more after those come. But through your diligence, my diligence, even when I'm no longer mayor, I'll call the city attorney and scream about signs.
But do we have anything that backs that? My point is, is like, Milbury has an ordinance that says you can't post it.
They're not, they're not allowed, okay? And they're not allowed in Milbury. Unfortunately, the same man who didn't read that they're not allowed in San Bruno, didn't read that they're not allowed in Milbury because he posted them in Milbury.
Yeah, I saw him.
So, you know, the law gives us the ability to enforce it and to cite, but it doesn't keep, because you pass the law, doesn't mean people aren't going to break it. So, and that's what you have in this situation.
Well, as long as we got something to back it, I mean, I, I just have never seen this ordinance. And from years ago, I know I asked about it.
Well, this, this came in the last, within the last 10 years when we started on our code enforcement regulations and administrative citations.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it being enforced.
Anyone else wishing to address the council? Item C, receive quarterly investment report from the city treasurer, Mr. Marty?
Honorable mayor and members of the city council, during the third quarter of 2009, the city continued to actively reposition its investment portfolio in accordance with revisions to the city's investment policy statement adopted in November 2008. If you recall, these revisions call for essentially a balanced portfolio between the San Mateo County Investment Pool, LAIF, the local agency investment fund, and individual securities, primarily direct obligations of the federal government. At quarter end, the city held the following. At the local agency investment fund, we had a balance of $11 million. With the San Mateo County Investment Pool, we had $10.5 million. And in individual securities held in trust at Union Bank, $10.1 million. At this point, the treasurer's office still recommends keeping in force the changes adopted a year ago until such time market conditions dictate otherwise. At this point, I want to turn our attention to the Lehman Brothers bankruptcy and as it relates to the San Mateo County Investment Pool. Congresswoman Speer, and Anna Eshu have arranged a meeting with Treasury Secretary Geithner. In attendance, this, this meeting will be held next week. In attendance will be House Financial Services Committee Chairman Barney Frank and 10 other House members from California, Colorado, and Florida. The purpose of this meeting is to convince Secretary Geithner that the 2008 TARP legislation authorizes the treasury to reimburse funds to public entities that lost money due to the collapse of Lehman Brothers. Should this not result in any reimbursement, there has been discussion of introducing specific legislation to address this issue. The concern is, the debate is, does TARP provide the authority for the treasury department to reimburse public entities? Congresswoman Speer, Anna Eshu, and the others, Barney Frank and the other House members believe that it does. So there's, that's where the, the issue that to be discussed is going to be. At this point, I think it's also important to note that the efforts of San Mateo County and specifically Deputy County Director Mary McMillan, she has been instrumental in organizing those entities affected by the Lehman bankruptcy. Indeed, the effort has gained the attention of not just our local representatives, but those in several other states. Now, these efforts have led directly to a House hearing on the subject. And of course, this upcoming meeting with Secretary Geithner. So I think it should be acknowledged that the county has really put forth a dedicated effort and a concerted effort to make this happen. And of course, I will update the council immediately on any new developments.
Any questions for the treasurer? Thank you, Jeff. Item B, adopt resolution approving form and authorizing execution and delivery the purchase and sale agreement and related documents with respect to the sale of the Proposition 1A receivable from the state and directing and authorizing certain other actions in conjunction therewith. And Mr. O'Leary?
Mr. Mayor and members of the city council, at the time, the city council was considering the city's own budget. Back in May and June of this year, there was extensive discussion about the potential impacts to this city and other cities in California on actions that the state might be taking in order to address their own budget issues. Back on August 25th, again, the council was briefed on some specific adverse actions that the state took in adopting their budget, impacting both the city's redevelopment agency and the city's general fund. I'm, I'm here tonight to suggest action the council could take or related to one of those matters. And that is the $829,000 that the city will be losing in property tax revenue to the state this year. First, though, I just might mention that for the redevelopment agency, the state is proposing to take about $2 billion from redevelopment agencies in, in California in this fiscal year and the next fiscal year. This, the San Bruno Redevelopment Agency share, proportionate share of that $2 billion amounts to about $1.9 million in this current fiscal year and additional $350,000 next year. There is, the redevelopment taking is not covered through Proposition 1A that was passed by the voters in 2004. So there is no fallback at this point besides legal action that is contemplated and is very close to being filed by the California Redevelopment Association to benefit the redevelopment agencies in that area. The particular item before you is, again, the taking of property tax that is actually covered under Proposition 1A, again, approved by, by the voters several years ago, which allows for the state to borrow for a three-year period, some portion, 8% of an agency's property tax, again, for San Bruno. And based on the calculation by the State Department of Finance, it comes to about $829,000 out of about $5.5 million that the city would normally anticipate receiving in, in, in property tax. In working with the League of California Cities and the Association of Governments, the legislature actually did come up with a, a plan under Proposition 1A that would allow for this borrowing to actually be financed. And what, what is happening is when the city, when the property tax will be taken from the city, the normal accounting would be for the city to create an accounts receivable for that money because it is a loan and would be expected to be paid back no later than June 2013. So we would set up a receivable on our books. What this program allows is for us to actually sell that, that receivable and get the funds immediately. And the California statewide community development authority would actually be buying these receivables. They would in turn issue bonds, almost like tax anticipation notes. They would be issuing bonds that then would be paid directly by the state when these funds are repaid with interest in 2013. So the city would essentially be made whole in, it's not a discounted amount. There was a similar financing several years ago, and I say similar, for motor vehicle money when the state took motor vehicle money. In that instance, there was a discount where the city got about 97% of the total. But in this, in this case, the city will, will receive 100%. There is no adverse impact on our credit rating, on our debt limit. If the state doesn't repay for whatever reason, for any reason, the bondholders, that does not impact the city of San Bruno. There's not a continuing obligation on the city of San Bruno's part. Now, the representations for those statements that I just made, the legal firm, Oryc Harrington Sutcliffe, is actually the transaction counsel for, for this matter. And, and they have acted as bond, similar to bond counsel, as a transaction counsel. And they are the ones doing the due diligence and representing the facts that I just stated. So, so it would be, I think San Bruno is in a position... So, it would be, I think San Bruno is in a position, because of the, while limited, that we do have some reserves. We could in fact leave this receivable probably on the books for the three years and get paid three years from now, plus the interest that is about 2% that would be paid. So, I think that is a choice clearly that the council could have. I would believe because of the literally no fault and that we are getting 100% of the money now, that would seem to me to be my recommendation. So, with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions the council has.
Question, council, Councilman O'Leary?
So, the bottom line is that who's ever financing this will reap the benefits of the interest.
The bondholders, in essence, will be getting the interest that's paid by the state of California.
And you keep referring that it's, we're getting, but it's ours already, right? It's supposed to be ours. It's just that, it's just that the state was not going to forward it to us. They were going to withhold it.
I only reference getting, to the extent that the property tax allow, actually be withheld, the first payment will be withheld in December when we get our first property tax payment. And we will be getting our first reimbursement from the authority in January. So, there will be actually, the money will be taken and we'll lose it for a month and then we'll, and then we'll get it. And again, similarly, in April with the property tax payment, we'll lose it for a month and we'll be paid in May, and then we will have 100% in May. So, there really just be a month period where we wouldn't have it.
And that's the only difference. We wouldn't be making any more money even if we, if there wasn't going to be a taking.
That's correct, except if we did, if they, if they took the $829,000, June of 2008, 2013, we get the 829 plus 2% interest back three years from now.
Unless there was, unless there was other legislation that stated that we'd get, that it would be delayed or something.
Unless the state took some action, which they've taken adverse actions for 10 years now.
But you'll have the cash, and so you certainly have the earning capability during the three years while you have the cash.
Correct, correct.
I would think it'd be foolish not to take the cash in light of the state's current situation. Somebody next year might find there's another deficit and need to extend that out some.
Cities, counties, and special districts, anyone that's losing property taxes eligible for this program. The last I had seen, 770 agencies had enrolled, they hadn't taken action yet. We're kind of the, one of the first ones, all the documentation just came out last week. And so, we're one of the first ones to have it before the council. The other thing I might mention again, as the, Oric is the transaction counsel, the documents and the agreement that is in front of you, we were advised that no word can be changed, no format can be modified. We left it in the same font size. They said not to touch anything if you're going to approve it. So, the documents are, will be signed precisely as they were submitted by the transaction counsel.
Through the chair. If I may, I just have a quick question when you, we referred to redevelopment. What happens to the pass-throughs? In other words, if the state is going to take 1.9 million, are the pass-throughs reduced on a pro rata basis, or do those pass-through agencies still become whole?
The pass-through agencies still become whole. The calculation, again, for the $2 billion, what the state is using is the gross tax increment of all agencies for the 2006, 2007 year. And it is not net of pass-through, pass-through agencies will be made whole, so it is on the net. It leaves, it leaves a 200, for this year, it leaves a 1.9, taking from the city with still full obligation for all of the pass-through, basic aid, and the memorandum of understanding with the county that our agency has. So, all of those will be made whole, besides the loss of the 1.9 from our agency.
Any other questions, staff, if not action from council?
Does the chair like to introduce a resolution for adoption?
Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Rybarra. Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Franzella.
Aye.
Item C, receive oral update on development activity.
Thank you, and good evening, honorable mayor and city council. Before I dive into the individual developments in San Bruno and the status of those developments, I wanted to give a bit of a context to the situation of the developments in San Bruno. As the city council knows, during the development boom, which I would define in San Bruno at least of 2002 through 2007, the city approved over 1,500 new units within the city of San Bruno. And a majority of those were constructed. There are some that are actually under construction right now at the crossing and at Summer Hill and in other areas of town. And there's also a number of units that have yet to be constructed and are, there's no immediate plans to construct those. And if you talk to developers about this, it's not really a demand issue. There's still a demand for housing out there within the Bay Area. That might not be the case for other areas of the country, but there still is a demand for housing within the Bay Area. For most developers, it comes down to a lending issue, both for lending for the developments of construction of the developments, the developments themselves, as well as for the, as well as for the people that are trying to obtain the loans. And although it doesn't seem as bad as it seemed perhaps in last November, it still does not appear that banks are lending money for large developments at this point. That's on the housing side, as well as the retail side. There's been very little movement in terms of new retail businesses, especially on the national front, although we have seen a little bit, we have seen additional inquiries within the past month or so. And before that, I would say from October of last year through just a month or two ago, people weren't even calling. There weren't even people who are looking to expand or even had the thought to expand. But you have seen some positive signs within the last month or two. And on the developer's side, I would say, within the last month or two, I've started to get calls from developers, especially interested in our transit corridor plan and what we're planning to do there. And I would say, without that plan and what they're seeing, that it, what might come to fruition because of that plan, we'd be getting zero calls from interested developers at this point. So, people are following that, following along with that process. It doesn't look like the PowerPoints that are coming on yet. I just had, it was basically a list of the different developments as well as photos from those developments, but you've seen most of them, so you'll be able to picture them. The first is a development that actually was never approved, but it was in the planning stages, it was a planning application. And that is at the Peace Lutheran Church site. And that is at the corner of San Bruno Avenue and Glenview Avenue, just north of the Glenview Terrace site. And it was a development proposal to basically split off half of the Peace Lutheran Church site and build five single-family homes there. Was originally applied about six months ago. They were going through the process, they were working as partners with the church, the developers were. Unfortunately, there was an illness within the developer's family, it was a family-owned business. Within the last two weeks, they actually withdrew their application. So, that application is not going forward at this point. The church plans to move forward with a portion of their development, a portion of that application right now to make it more development-ready. They plan to go forward with a lot split so they could go ahead and sell that lot to a potential developer, and that'll be easier to go through the process in the future. I'm going through these developments in order of the number of units. That one was five units. Second biggest development is the Cedar Grove Town Homes. They're actually Cedar Grove Single Family Homes at 599 Cedar on the corner of Pepper. You may remember that this is the old Peninsula Christian Fellowship Church site. After a lengthy planning process, they were approved about a year and a half ago. Unfortunately, that developer went out of business. He was based in Bakersfield, and there ain't, there aren't as many Bakersfield-based developers around anymore. At this point, the church is trying to sell the development. The 14 homes are on the market for 2.75 million. Icrest, right south of there, 24 single-family homes, half of them were built. There's people within all 12 homes, only a small, I think four of the 12 actually sold. The rest are being rented out, but they're being rented out for a good rate that's helping offset some of the losses the developer may have seen. The 12 additional homes, the developer says, will be built when the market returns. He's estimating it will be around 2012 at the earliest, but he's anxious to go once the market returns and move forward with the product that he originally proposed. Probably the most interesting project, the downtown cinema site, as you know, that's taking the place of the old cinema building downtown, as well as the two bars next door, and got approvals to replace it with 48 second- and third-story condos, as well as 15,000 square feet of retail. This one is paused too at this point because of lending. The developer first had American lenders that were interested. They fell through, they had, he also had Chinese lenders that were interested. Those have not come forward yet. We talked to him today. He says that he has two new investors interested. They're talking to him within the next month or two, and hopefully he'll have word back to us by the end of the year what the status of the development is. He still is anxious about it, it's just about getting the money together to build, actually construct it. One that the council has not seen yet, there's a condominium, actually an apartment complex on Whitman Way, across the street from Shelter Creek. It's a 48-unit, it's called Park Plaza Apartments. They originally got approval to become condominiums back in 1981. Shelter Creek came online at the same time, so they weren't as marketable. They pulled back their application after being approved. Now, they're going, but they still had their state approval for the subdivision map, so now they're going ahead again for their local approvals. There has been an extensive outreach effort with the existing tenants. There's many longstanding tenants there. We have a number of provisions in our ordinance to help protect those tenants, especially senior and disabled tenants. And we're making sure that the developer goes by those rules. And actually, it's a pretty good, for being 25 years old, it's a pretty good condo ordinance in that it does protect the existing residents. Many who've lived there for over 25 years, they're going to have a chance to be the first to buy. If not, they will get, they're able to stay there if they're seniors for over five years without rent increases. And other people who live in there will get moving expenses paid in up to four months paid in a equal apartment within the area. Merrimott, 70 homes, that's the old Carl Sandberg site. This one has been moving forward. It's been slower than expected, obviously, but all 70 homes have been, the building permits have been obtained. 39 have been completed at this point, about 30 have been sold. They came back and downsized about a dozen of the homes to a smaller footprint. And from the, talking to the developer, those actually sold right away because it got it to a lower price point, a smaller home, and they were more popular than some of the larger footprints that were approved there. The largest project that we have going on right now, it was recently named, is the SNK's project at the crossing, is known as Acapella, the Acapella Apartments and Condominiums. There are two buildings, a total of 350 units. 163 will be rented as apartments. Those should come, they're expected to originally come online in late, in October. It's more likely that it'll be late November when they'll first be rented out, when we're able to give them a C of O for that, for that building. The second phase of them, the 187 condo units, those will be coming online sometime of June of next year. I'd say early summer, sometime midsummer of next year, and those will be for the for-sale product. Treetops. Obviously, this is the development that's impacted an existing neighborhood the most. This is a 308-unit apartment building that really wasn't built that long ago in 1985. It was vacated in 2005 and has sit vacant since that time. The city council has approved two versions of this. They approved the 510-unit in July of 2007 with a particular architectural design. About a year later, the developer came back saying that construction was too expensive. They proposed a new construction type with a new parking plan. Unfortunately, because of the lending environment, that project never came to fruition either. They've come back to the city recently saying that they don't want to go forward, they most likely don't want to go forward with that 510-unit building at this point. They want to remodel the existing 308-unit building. So, we're working with the developers at that time to, A, secure the site, make the site look as good as possible being a vacant site, while at the same time, making the entitlement process fluid enough so that they could go forward at the earliest point to remodel the existing, if that's the path that they choose. So, we've been working with them over the last couple of weeks to help that come to fruition. On the retail side, the council knows well that recently about a 12,000-square-foot retail development was approved at the crossing. Spoke to the developer this morning. They pulled their building permits last week. They expect to start construction next week. And that includes a 5,300-square-foot restaurant, which will be the first tenant in there. Regarding other residential activity, overall, obviously, it's slowed. Large, larger residential additions, which are generally the ones that require use permits during the peak years, there was about 70 to 80 use permits a year. We're now down to about 30 to 40, 30 to 40, which is actually consistent with historically during the 90s and early 2000s, the number of use permits that we have. What we've noticed is a trend, people who were perhaps going to expand before are now doing remodels, making their existing homes nicer, redoing the floor plans to accommodate their family, or just doing smaller additions, bump out single-story additions, rather than proposing the large additions. As I stated earlier in the presentation, for the last, since everything fell out last October, there's been little national-type expansion or remodel of existing places. But an encouraging sign is that over the last month, there's been four national chains that have come to us with tenant improvement plans. Courtyard and Marriott, the Bay Hill Starbucks, Wells Fargo, as well as Old Navy have all, have tenant improvement plans in or are going to start construction soon. And they're not elaborate remodels, but it is good to see that some people are starting to spend money to fix up their existing commercial space. Regarding new businesses, I guess someone would say on the opposite end of the spectrum, at Tanforan, Hooters recently picked up their tenant improvement permit. They're expected to be open in December. Also, at Tanforan, a store called Romper Room is going to open sometime, they're just pulling their tenant improvement right now. At first, I thought it was a kids-type clothing store, but it's actually a kids' play area where you could go in, kind of like a Chuck E. Cheese-type small store, but a smaller, a smaller footprint. There's also a new Brazilian steakhouse proposed that's currently on El Camino, that's proposing to move down to where Kids Cut was located on Seminole Avenue. The trend in San Bruno is a lot brighter than it is in other areas of the state. The state recently approved a subdivision map ordinance, which extended developments that were approved during the, I think, between 2005 and 2008, and automatically extended those map approvals for three additional years. An interesting idea that Burlingame have, and I think other cities are doing, is that not only they would match up that state approval of the subdivision maps and actually extend local approvals by a period of three, two to three years. That way, everything that was approved but is paused at this point, the developer would not have to come back and go through an entitlement process again, which would further delay development. So, that's something that community development's going to be researching and coming back to the council perhaps at some point for your recommendation. So, I could take any questions at this time.
Thank you for the update. Any questions?
To the chair. Aaron, you say that there's been some inquiry and discussion about the transit master plan.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion about the vacant, vacancies that are in San Bruno, that, that intersection where the great separation will be? What I'm getting at is, we've got vacancies, we've got some ISORs, and it goes all the way up to the western part of the city where, at what point does the city say enough is enough? We can't, we can't be just telling you to cut the weeds down and all that and clean up the properties. What point, you know, can we, I don't know, force something on them?
Yeah, regarding the first, the first question that you had, yes. I mean, people have been interested in that area because of the train station. The, what they tell me, and I think is, is an honest answer, is that at three stories, they can't make a development pencil. There's, we're one of the few cities with that small of height limit that they could go other areas where you could build four or five stories and be able to actually get something to pencil, especially when you look at an area around a train station where you could really support those densities. And I, I think that's the idea behind the transit plan, to take a look at that. Regarding those, regarding those, the other question, yeah, I mean, it's a difficult, it's a difficult situation. You could get them to maintain your property, you could get them to keep it to a certain level, but there's other, I mean, you could use redevelopment in other ways to look at those properties and see what we could do as a redevelopment agency to help encourage those properties to develop. But that's something that we have to further explore.
To the chair. Councilmember Medina?
Just a comment, I appreciate this report. I'm sure the citizens do as well, because I think there's a lot for us to be updated. I know I get questioned a lot on various projects. I know I get questioned a lot on various projects or things that are or are not moving and what their status is. So I appreciate this update and the thoroughness, as well as I would like to see this to continue to come back on a more regular basis, so we do have periodically, even if it's twice a year, so that not only us, the council, but the citizens that are listening can be updated on what's going on in their community.
Right.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Item D, adopt resolution confirming existence of public emergency and ratifying city manager's immediate expenditure of public money to safeguard life, health, safety, property, or essential public services. This issue will require a four-fifths vote to confirm the emergency. City manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The action before you tonight, as the mayor indicated, is by a four-fifths vote of the city council to confirm the existence of a public emergency, which I declared last Thursday afternoon under the authority that has been granted to me by two specific actions previously of the city council, or of the city council. One is Section 2.48 of the San Bruno Municipal Code empowers the Director of Emergency Services, which is one of the functions that is vested in the city manager's responsibilities, to proclaim the existence or threatened existence of a public emergency when the city is affected or is likely to be affected by a public calamity and the city council is not in session. Secondly, the city council took action by resolution to authorize, in the event of such a public emergency, a suspension of the normal requirements of the Public Contracts Code, which requires the city to utilize a competitive public bid process for projects, public works projects, over a certain dollar value. By the resolution previously executed by the city council, the city may expend any sum required in that emergency without complying with the requirements of the Public Contracts Code, which would otherwise potentially pertain. In this particular case, the circumstances that led to my decision to proclaim a public emergency have been occurring in San Bruno since approximately September 30th, at which time, staff became aware by an alert from a public utility company that there was a suspected leakage of wastewater, raw sewage, from one of the city's main lines into an underground utility vault in the neighborhood of Montgomery and Tanforan, and more specifically the 1,200 block of Montgomery in San Bruno. In this particular case, AT&amp;T noted to staff that the underground vaults were filling with what appeared to be wastewater and potentially jeopardizing the communications equipment that is housed in those underground vaults. AT&amp;T was taking action to remove the water from the vaults, but became increasingly concerned that it was, in fact, not groundwater, rainwater, but actually wastewater. Upon staff's investigation, which occurred over a period of several days and involved extensive testing and analysis, and included the assistance of the City of South San Francisco staff, because at that point, it was not entirely certain whether the potential leakage was from a San Bruno line or a South San Francisco line, because, as you probably realize, this area exists on the border of our community, and it is a, an older section of the community, whereas wastewater lines have been in place for decades. It is an area which is heavily utilized by heavy trucks, and it is a very busy, active area. So there was a need both to identify exactly what was going on, what was the source of the problem, and then whether that problem was essentially owned by one or the other of the two municipal jurisdictions. Unfortunately for us, that testing and analysis work, as it closed in steadily over the days of last week, increasingly identified that the suspected problem is a leak from one or many of the various areas of a city main line, which is heavily impacted with fractures for a length of approximately 600 to 800 feet. Again, it's an older line. It's, it's unknown exactly where the specific problem is emanating, or whether it is emanating from a variety of different areas. Our televising of the line has indicated that it is actually in very poor shape, as I said, with numerous areas of fracture. By installing a bypass, a temporary bypass to this line, staff was able to identify with most precision, after testing, in fact, did confirm the existence of fecal coliform in the, in the vault, that in fact, once identified that this was, in fact, wastewater, that staff then proceeded to narrow the area from which it was coming, and determined that by installing a bypass, a temporary detour around the impacted pipe area, that in fact, they were able to observe that the leakage into the underground vaults slowed. It didn't stop, but, or at least as I was given to understand, it didn't stop, but it markedly slowed. That really is the information that we have from an analytical, scientific testing perspective that leads us to a conclusion that it is at least highly probable, if not entirely the fact, that a sanitary sewer overflow is occurring and is continuing continuously from a location in a main line that is the responsibility of the City of San Bruno. Not only does that create the potential for a health hazard, to, is creating impacts to the viability of the underground telecommunications, communications equipment, but the fact of the existence of a sanitary sewer overflow, and one particularly that is continuing unabated, subjects the city to the potential, if not the probability, of a significant penalty action by the regional board. As the city council is aware, the regional board expects that we operate a sanitary sewer system that does not overflow. And as impossible as that is, that is the standard that we're challenged and expected to meet. In this particular, it is therefore necessary that when a sanitary sewer overflow is noticed, whether suspected or confirmed, that overflow is required to be reported immediately to the regional board. That was done as required, as is done in every case where similar situations occur in the City of San Bruno. And the expectation is the city will move immediately to address and correct and prevent the continuation of the, of the overflow situation. As I indicated, in this situation, isolating the problem was, took a bit of time, and so we are already, if you will, overdue in moving swiftly to correction of that problem. And that is the basis, in perhaps a long-winded summary form, for the emergency proclamation. Having made that proclamation on October 8th, last Thursday, staff was immediately directed to move as quickly as possible to locate a contractor, to identify an appropriate repair technology, and to initiate work to repair the situation. That work has occurred. Staff reported to me yesterday that they have identified a suitable and available contractors, no easy trick, contractors tend to be working, so getting somebody here on a moment's notice took some work. The proposed repair in this particular case is a dig-out and replacement of approximately 600 to 800 feet of the main line. Tevising the, and the line analysis that has occurred to date demonstrates that there are three manhole locations, which are seriously deteriorated and require, also require immediate attention. The necessary repairs then would further repair those manhole locations. And as the repair progresses, staff and the contractor will obtain access to analyze whether additional repairs will be necessary to the lower lateral areas connected to this main line. Those areas are not readily available for video inspection, but once the main line is opened up and the trench has been completed, it will be possible to further analyze whether lower laterals in this area also need attention. So staff has identified a contractor, I believe that is West Valley, who has done previous work for the city. West Valley is able to mobilize and to be here, if, if not today, very quickly, and they will immediately initiate the necessary repairs and the additional analysis. The estimate that I have at the current time is 100 to 150,000 dollars. I believe that 150,000 dollars will be sufficient in the event that it is necessary also to repair lower lateral lines adjacent to this main line. Under the law, the, this procedure, this proclamation of emergency and the immediate expenditure of city funds requires that I report to you, not only at this meeting, the immediately next available city council meeting, and request your adoption of a resolution in confirming the existence of the emergency that I've just described, and at each subsequent meeting until the situation is fully and finally resolved. So with the information I currently have, you can expect a similar report at your next regular city council meeting, that will include an update on the situation, and either your further action to confirm the continuing existence of the public emergency, or should we be extremely expedient in resolving this situation, potentially your action to accept conclusion of the emergency. So with that, again, we're asking for your four-fifths vote to approve the resolution that's before you tonight.
Any questions of staff? Not any action from council?
The chair will introduce the resolution for adoption.
Rule call, please.
Vice Mayor Ruane.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Ibera.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Connell.
Aye.
Mayor Franz Allen.
Aye.
Item 11, reports of commission boards and committees. There are no reports this evening. Item 12, comments from council members. Receive oral report from Councilmember O'Connell regarding her attendance at the League of California Cities Annual Conference, September 16 through 18, 2009.
Thank you. The emphasis this year was on going green, and a lot of the workshops that I attended and the different vendors that were there were going on about what it, what does it mean to go green? How do you go green? What are the good parts of going green, and how do you pay for it? So I have a lot of information on those lines, and I'll share it with the appropriate people.
To the chair. Councilmember Ibera? I have some sad news and some happy news. So the sad news first is that a longtime resident of San Bruno passed away a week ago today. His name was Alan Johansson. He probably saw him walking in the park. He lived at Genovin, you know, Crystal Springs and Cypress. And his claim notoriety that I know of is that he is the last charter member of the San Bruno Lions, so he was a member of our club for 65 years, and sadly, he passed away last week. I don't have any information on services, but we wish his, his wife and his family well. Good news, just like to wish the mayor happy birthday.
Thank you.
This coming, next few days.
Friday. All right, thank you. I just had one issue, as, you know, as the city continues to move forward and talk about shared services with police and potential, with fire and potentially with police, I think it's important that the city manager have a subcommittee of the city council, and I'd like to appoint Vice Mayor Ruane and Councilmember O'Connell to work on that committee, so you have a subcommittee of the city council to report back to, back and forth with.
Agree there?
Pardon me?
That was myself and Medina.
No, yourself and Medina, I'm sorry.
Are you confusing Irene and I?
Your hair is close.
I don't want to say your birthdays are adding up, but I don't know.
Vice Mayor Ruane and Councilmember Medina.
Didn't you offer it to me first?
We can only do two. See what age does to you?
Starting to lose it.
Okay. Both agree to serve, so. From here, the city council will be going into closed session on two items. The first is to provide direction to legal counsel regarding property damage claims. Shelter Creek, September 18th, water damage pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9C. And the second item, closed session, to provide direction to legal counsel regarding potential litigation, California Government Code Section 54956.9B1. From there, we'll adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on October 27th, 7 o'clock PM, at the San Bruno Senior Center, providing the lights are on. So, thank you very much.